Okay, I've got 8:30. And I guess we can get going. Peter, you want to start this off?
Okay, well, I hope everybody got the agenda. Bill, how are we doing on the cash?
We're still at 2.74 billion. You know, the only thing that we recognize is we have a $1 million paving project with engineering costs, so that's going to tap us. And then we also have the $240,000 job with, you know, but that money we have not received and will not receive the $100,000 until we submit invoices. And Garry Up has just started Stop 24. So that's, you know, that's what we've got. Just a little housekeeping. We had the council meeting and the budget for 2021 was approved. And so that information, we've scanned the resolution that was signed by the council members and that went in yesterday. So we're good to go for 2021. And we still, I'm still nervous about what we're going to get in terms of receipts for December because even though I was happy with 92%, if people paid their whole year in advance, it was maybe a little skinny come November. And the one thing that I will tell you is that the county has said that they will not send, you know, people had a forgiveness and they didn't have to send their money until July. And the county has told us that they will not send us any of those additional funds unless we request a draw. And we're not, we're not in need of a draw. So I don't know how much money came in late based on the governor's forgiveness of a couple of months from May to, I guess, three months from May to, or two months, May to July. So there may be some money that's been paid that we don't know about, but that's, I think we just have to hold our, cross our fingers and wait.
So, Ken, go ahead. So the 92% you talked about, that 92% was 92% of what we expected?
Well, no, no, Pete, it was, probably it was less than 92% by a few percentage points. All I did was look at 2019. And you know, we do get another, you know, our max levy does go up 3%. But I was just hoping that we would, we would match 2019 and we came to 92% of it. Byrd Harbor received less than 20%, but most of their revenues are from the steel company. And anytime a corporation is told they can wait two months, they're going to wait two months. So they, so I was pleased, but now I'm nervous. But yes, that's 92.3% of 2019.
So on the distribution, if, for example, which I did, I paid in full, that was given to the county, did they remit all of that to us or did they hold half of that?
No, they, they remit all of their, all of their, all the receipts. So for those of us who paid in full, that comes to us. But that, that becomes, you know, that's, that's where I say it's questionable because I didn't know I was paying full either, just because I didn't have to. And I decided to pay in full this time, but that, you know, it might mean if we got a lot of full-time payers, we would have been half-time payers, we might be living a lie. But I asked the county if they could give me an assessment and they went down. I mean, they, you know, I thought maybe they could tell me, compare the prior years with this year in terms of how many people paid full, but they don't seem to have that capacity. So, you know, whatever you send, they, they apply to your taxes. And when you look at your taxes, they're paid in full for the year and we get those receipts in full. So that the problem is without doing a survey, which is kind of expensive, we don't know what.
And what, again, was the total for 2019 for the year? Do you have that, do you know that?
I don't have that with me, but you know, it was, you know, it was, you know, just because I was being perverse, I did it with all of the four pieces, General, NVH, Park, and CCD, and they were all exactly the same percentage. So I mean, they, you know, they calculated our pieces of each of those, those four pieces. And, but.
Do you remember what the six months was? We got 92% of the six months of 2019. Do you remember what 2019?
Yeah, I don't remember that. But I can send that to everybody when I get to the office. I could send it out to everybody so they, so they, so they know what, what it is.
And I think it'd be worthwhile because I'm, I'm getting kind of leery here of what's going on.
You know, we're, we're all a little.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have an idea.
Really don't know what's going to happen.
Can we request that draw at any time or did we have to do that at a certain time?
No, yeah, we could request the draw. I mean, I think they've got funds and, you know, and some people are, you know, have requested it. So it's not, it's not, and I, you know, and that might be something we want to do. I mean, the cost of money is so, you know, is so cheap right now that, you know, we, we, but we could certainly do that.
I guess it might be worthwhile at least to find out how we do that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll check. I wasn't in need at this, at that time, but we, you know, these big projects, you know, we're, we're just, we haven't even put any shovels in the ground on the paving project except to put in drains. So there's no milling and paving has started and Garry Up has just started digging in the ground also. So, but I, obviously, when they finish, they're, they're going to want to get paid. And then I can wait for our, for our December deliveries.
So all funds seem then to be under budget or closed?
Everything's under budget, Pete. And, you know, and the Park Department, of course, has, you know, has stepped up and said that they would pay $60,000 of the, of the 140 that the town is due for the, for the Garry Up project. I mean, I, we could kind of remove 100 from the 240 in terms of what we're going to eventually have to pay. So then we have to come up with the other 80 for, for the finish of that, of that project.
The two, what did you call, what did you name the project? What's your name of it?
Well, probably the Garry Up is the Stop 24 successful vendor. And they're the ones that have started. Their, their successful bid was 240,007, comma, 700. And we have $100,000 repayment from, you know, from the Coastal Grants people. So I look at that as 140, comma, 7 plus another six or $8,000 for engineering. And John Wall has stepped up to do some of the review of that also. So it's keeping the cost down a bit, the engineering cost. But, but yeah, that's what we've, that's.
And then there's 60, you say there's 60,000 from the Park Department?
60,000 Park and then, and then they, you know, they didn't have any major projects. And even though it's a wonderful program, the Kibbeys program that we, we had to cancel because of the pandemic, it actually, you know, it costs more than, than the receipts. It's never been a profit maker, but that was just one more thing of probably another $20,000 that we, 15,000 to 20,000 that we saved. So they, you know, they didn't, they've, they've been stepping up with the, with the stop remediation and things like that too. So that's, you know, that's giving us a little, a little break in there. But we also do have another $94,000 that we're going to need to pay. And John Wall knows about this, but we, the front-end loader has, has, we got it on a lease, so we got it brand new. And the lease, the four-year lease is up December 2nd. So the last payment that we made was, was actually November, December of 2019. And so we're, our lease is all paid up, but they either take the machine back and we start leasing a new machine or we have to, we have to buy it. So I've, I've been researching with, with banks and I also have asked Dear Credit to give me a quote, which I have not received yet, of what it would call, what, what their financing would be. But Tom and John Wall and I all believe that the, the lease for that piece of equipment included 500 hours per year. You know, that's their estimate, just like when you lease a car, they estimate how many, how many miles. In this case, it's hours that are recorded on a meter. And we've used less than 500 in four years. So the vendor has said it would be stupid for you to not buy this equipment because it's, it's got no glitches and it's, and you have, we actually have three years of, of maintenance paid for because the, when we paid for that, we paid for, you know, for the 50, 100, 150, 200 mile or hour maintenance. But we do have to, we, that's another $100,000 that we gotta, we gotta come up with.
But, but we're planning on financing that, right?
Yeah, we'll finance that, yeah. And I, right now, five years is what we're, what we're looking at. But I don't have that to report to the, to the, you know, to the, to the, to the, to the D C.
Okay.
We have that shortly.
Okay.
Got a quote for 2.35% from one of the Indiana Bond Bank, which is much better than the local prices that I've got, which were 4.25%. So I don't think we're going to have to make any, any differential equations to figure out which is the cheaper.
So the bond bank is still in business?
The Indiana Bond Bank is still in business. And this is your benefit, the, you know, we, we did all this dazzle-dazzle on the, on the, on a general obligation bond. And Carl Sender is going to, he was working with me on the, on the 2021 budget yesterday. But we, we also, he's sending me a list of banks that he thinks would be interested in purchasing notes and for that, on that bond. And I talked to somebody and they told me that we should actually contact the Indiana Bond Bank because small, to me, a million dollars sounds like a lot of money to, to most of these people. It's chump change. And so, so we can also, I will also research with the Indiana Bond Bank on, on what their, on what their interest is in participating in this, in this, that's the bond that we're talking about for the stop remediation.
Yeah, when I, when we talked to the bond bank before you filled out all the paperwork and did all that stuff, and then all of a sudden they kind of disappeared because they couldn't compete at one time.
Well, what happened, Pete, was they, they, they didn't, they just didn't, I didn't get as low a rate from them as, as I did from Horizon Bank. But what, you know, what happens is Horizon Bank isn't very skilled in, in doing loans for, for equipment. So they admitted to me that 4.25 was the best they could do for, for a loan for that. But, but when we did, when we did other borrowing from them, they, they stepped up. So I, you know, so I still think we need to talk to them. It was just that the bond bank, what the Indiana Bond Bank is, for those who are listening, is the Indiana Bond Bank is really, is just a consortium of banks. And PNC is one of them, Crossroads Bank is another one. And all they do is we, you contact them and then they go to their individual consortium and get bids. So they don't, they don't really have any money, but they exist by, obviously, you know, they, they want paperwork from us so they can tell a governor that they're doing a good job, I guess is what it is. But, but they're, but they're, they just, they just provide this information. So when you send a request to the Indiana Bond Bank, it just goes to a variety of banks in the, in their consortium. I think it's just six banks.
Okay.
Deal with, but they're, they're really designed for municipalities of our size as opposed to the real, the real big guys.
So do we have estimates for 21, 23, and 29 yet? Well, forget 29, 21 and 23, are they firmer yet?
Uh, no, we're still at 750,000, but we haven't, we have to put those out to bid. And so that's going to be the next step. We got back the preliminary delineation. So we've sent that out to the engineers who will come up with a plan. And once we have a plan, I think we can send it out to bid. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, that's correct. When you say a plan, we kind of know what we want to do, but the engineering required the delineation so that they could know exactly where they're supposed to place it. So that's out to the engineer. And then once he gets some definitive plans put together, then we'll be able to put it out for bid. I, we may be, you know, approaching the, not being able to get it done this year because of the, the time involved in a bid process versus when the lake will start hammering us, but we're hoping to get it done this year.
And so when that bid process goes out, Bill, have you handled that in the past? Or is that something the attorney does?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've, we've, we've actually not done it before, but we're, you know, we're going to go, not for something like this. So.
The engineer will come up.
Carl Sender is, you know, is skilled in that. So we'll, we'll use, we'll use Carl to, to help us, to help us get there. The one thing to do, by the way, is this delineation. I know the last time we talked, you said do not pay that bill to Dill Tara. And you're telling me now that they have.
Well, the delineation technically, um, this is from the delineator. She says it's supposed to be approved by the Army Corps. Our ordinance does not require that. So as far as I'm concerned, we have enough information that we can proceed. I suppose we, you know, my concern is if we pay her, she's going to be less interested in getting that approval from the Army Corps.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I never want to pay too soon. But when, when we get that, yeah, just let you, you and John Wall tell me when it's time to do, yeah, to do that. I know that.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. But we just want to be sure we're ready to go with that bid process immediately once we have a plan in place and ready to go. Because if we have to give a plan, obviously, the people are going to bid on it.
Yeah. I mean, we, I mean, we just have to announce it in the paper and get bids and everything. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Likely, more than likely, we'll have to have the engineer draw up the bid documents.
Yeah.
I don't, we don't necessarily need Sender for that, Bill. The engineer normally would draw up the bid documents so that, I guess, Sender really has to be involved in.
Yeah.
John, which engineer are we going to?
I'm not sure, Bob. Do you remember which one you guys have been?
Is it Collins?
I think it was Collins. I, I'm not absolutely sure. I know Larry's been talking to them though.
They had some issues with the other guy, so they've been using Collins, I believe.
Okay, good. All right. I, I contacted Carl on the CCD stuff, but I've not followed up. He's obviously got other things to do right now. And the process really doesn't need to start till after the first year. So we'll keep that on the tab here.
Yeah.
Pete, one thing before we leave the shore protection. In the event that we, because of timeframes and weather, if we can't get the permanent measures bid and put in place in time for the storms, we may wind up with an expenditure for temporary work again. But I, we don't want to go down that road, but there is that potential. This process has taken, you know, considerably longer than we all had hoped. And we, we are already, you know, midway through October. So last year, the storm started abusing us right at the end of the month, right at the end of October. So there's an outside chance, while we wouldn't have to spend all the money that we, we talked about as far as the million dollar bond program, we, we may have to do temporary measures if it comes to that. We'll just have to play it by ear.
And we should be able to use the funds from that bond for those temporary measures because that is shore protection also, correct? I would hope.
Yeah, we, I would think. You know, last year, we spent a little south of 100 grand on the temporary measures. And then I think this year, it's a little bit complicated because the lake is up a little bit more. So it's a little harder to get at some of these areas. But, you know, we can anticipate maybe somewhere around there because there is already some temporary measures in place here. Hopefully, that's not the case. Hopefully, we can get a bid and get the permanent stuff in.
The one other, the one other thing that we have that, that we are working with Sender and company on is the, is the stormwater utility. And Carl has, has got some samples of ordinances from, the only confusing part of that is that we, that most of the stormwater utility, kind of their ordinances are embedded in their, in their wastewater, you know, in their sewer sanitary district. And of course, we don't have one of them there things. So we need, uh, we will have to, you know, we will, we will have to kind of borrow and, but, you know, most of these things are all written. And I've got, I've got about 30 pages of, of things that were printed from state code that talks about, talks about that. So we still will need to come up with some kind of budget to determine. But the plan for that was, once we get that one approved, that would be a little simpler because we would basically just be adding a small user fee to, to the, to the bill. And, you know, I'm hoping this, I had to make a complaint the other day about the fact that the bill is creeping up. He's a retired.
The Stormwater Utility does that, that requires a separate body to administer that, yes or no?
Yeah, it's a three-person, it's a three-person group, Pete, and it needs, so it would, I mean, there is no restriction on making it. I mean, it could be people from, that were appointed from the water board or the, or the town council, or it could be a separate group or a mix of all.
Can you send me that information you got?
Yep.
In fact, you could send it out to all of us. We just.
Yeah, I'll send it out to all of you.
Now, John, on the lake, the people that Larry's been working with on the lakefront, have all the private homes now been stabilized or their, their private seawalls repaired and all that kind of junk?
No, part of what are, we've had, one of the more controversial issues is what we're doing at Stop 29. So there are people cropping up every day, actually, some people who think they're in peril who really are not. And then there are also some who are genuinely in peril that we're trying to work with. Some of them have, Bob can speak to this in more detail, some of them have submitted the actual building permits for seawall work that are under, that will be under review, have been under review over the last week or two. So I wouldn't say that they're all done yet, Pete.
Yeah, in fact, we're thinking about, in fact, I've got to talk to Larry later today. I think we need a special meeting about a couple of those requests.
Okay. All right. Bill, you said, folks, we, nothing has started with the community crossing grant, right? No, no digging yet, no paving, no milling?
Yes, it has started. I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's according to what we heard from, from Tom and John Wall, that we, that we're more than halfway through the drain. That did start a little more slowly than we had hoped. But, but the, the plan was to go from west to east with, with putting in these, these new drains. And then, and then, then once they, they finish that, then they would go from west to east. But there has been some discussion about maybe starting before all the drains are in, just because some of the, the drain work is, is less, uh, decide, you know, is, is less contingent on, on, on weather. And we do want to, we want to kind of get that. And the other thing is, we, you know, we've also, which we'll talk about too, is the leaf, which is on the, on the agenda, is the, the leaf has been just decided as, as November 2nd through December 4th. And, you know, we, we don't want to be in a position where we're, where we're duking it out with, with lake remediation and paving and leaf pickup.
Okay. John, I guess everything is so far in sync? The, the drains are going to be done in time for the paving to be done?
Yeah, I just, I'm in the process of forwarding. We got from Haas Engineering, Reece Riley's revised paving schedule. They should finish up those drainage structures this week and then the paving scheduled to start essentially the last week in October. Uh, we, we're trying to encourage them to get out here sooner because as morning temperatures approach freezing, it's, it's less, you run into quality issues with asphalt paving when temperatures get too extreme. So we're trying to encourage them to start a little earlier. Worst case, they stay on the schedule that they proposed or that they've revised just last week. And that would be that they'd start in on the end of October, which would be the last week in October and finish up a week or two into November, you know, again, depending on weather. If they finish everything, Pete, then you'd be looking at the expenditures roughly 30 days after that. So you'd be looking at mid-December to shell out the money on that community grant.
So Reece Riley's doing the drainage too?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of the contract. They're, it's not significant drainage work. It's basically just dry wells. They've also, they're actually right in the process of putting some concrete in yesterday. And today, they've been excavating for that. They'll get the concrete work done. So the drainage and the concrete curb work was precursor, were our precursors to the paving and to give the devil his due that you can't really pave up against that brand new concrete. You need to give it a week or so. So they're really, you know, they're performing well. Don't get me wrong. It's just, it's the nature of the beast. It's sequential work and we, you know, we didn't let it till mid-summer.
Okay. Sewers, anybody know what's going on? How, everything been passed for Michigan City Sand Ferry?
I think from what I heard from Chris, I think we're in good shape. I think our copy of the agreement matches theirs. And I think both have been signed. So I think at this point, I guess we, we still haven't given final approval from the town council on that project. And I'm not sure where we're at with that. I, you know, I'm going to have to talk to Chris and see when we have a final go on that. Because town council will have to vote that up or down. We've assigned the agreement, but I don't think that's a final contract.
So we're, if, if God forbid, we should book that down, we're on the hook for how much, Bill, over 100,000 engineering fees and all that stuff?
Probably, yeah, yeah.
The, now, the water department, are they, how is that being handled? Is the water department willing to piggyback on some of this stuff or what?
No, the water, we would have to have a separate, all they would, all they wanted to do is if the, if the patient is open on Lakeshore Drive, they want to, they want to, they want to fix some, some, some equipment that is, you know, that goes back 80 years. And so they want, they're, they're going to do some work there. But that would be, that would actually be another charge that would, would, and that would accrue to everybody, even the sewer folk in, you know, on Fairway. And, and because they, they would be getting the advantage of the, of the, and maybe Laurel's on there even though she's masquerading as Robert LaMae.
Still. Right, we plan on piggyback on there. And again, that, what those costs are will be spread out through all the residents in Long Beach. While we're talking about that, I want to talk about the hydrant fees too. What we had originally, we talked with Carl Sender and he suggested, when we had a public hearing to talk about the fees for Lakeshore Drive, we would add the hydrant. Lake Shore Drive, we would add the hydrant. Well, because we're not doing that now this fall, we have looked at just doing the fees for the hydrant on the water bill, talking to Carl Sender. He had said that it's actually, those are towns revenues. So he felt that the town should have the public hearing on that and suggested at your next meeting, council meeting, to go ahead and do that because we didn't have time to get it on the last council meeting with the two week notice for public hearing. So he said he's writing up whatever needs to be done. And we're going to get an exact figure. I'll have that, Bob, before your next council meeting. And then, once we have that public hearing, then he suggested that the first of the year that we would put the hydrant fees on the water bill. And then.
Go ahead. So we need to announce that we're having a public hearing at the next town council meeting?
Correct.
So Bill, we need to make sure we have that announced. Okay.
And that, you know, we pay $2,450 a month, which is a normal practice that, you know, that's what you see in Michigan City paying the water department for the hydrants. But, you know, as we start to reach into the town's pockets, I think the residents would, would find, you know, even that's $30,000 a year, that would be another $30 a year per resident to, to add, which is, you know, $250 a, a month. And, you know, I think that would be, it would, it's like everything else that people will complain, but I, I see that as, as a way to, to give more money to the town. And, and I don't think the residents, residents are going to have to pay for something more than $250 when we get into the, you know, into the fire station and the, and the fire truck and everything else. So I, I think maybe we can, I think we can sell that. But that's, that's the other thing.
I think we ought to have the stormwater fee and the hydrant fee addressed at the same hearing so that we're not slamming them. I, I, I think it's more politically expedient to put them both on at the same time rather than.
Yeah.
And that also has to have public hearing, right?
Yep.
Yep.
So why don't we announce that for both if the, provided Carl can get us what we need to have for those meetings?
Yeah.
The magnitude of the stormwater fee is totally up to us. And as Sender said, he was going to, I think he said he was going to contact me, I believe, Bill, and maybe you, we were going to sit down and come up with a budget. But right now, I think you were knocking around $10, Bill, on what you thought.
Yeah.
We don't need that much. But if we've got 10 for that and three for the other one, then we'd be looking at a $13 jump in total rather than hitting up the people twice.
Yeah. No, I think that's, that's, that's a good idea.
So John, do you have an estimate of what the stormwater situation is?
Pete, that's, you know, we've, we can go back and look at what Tom has spent on dry wells and dry well repair and that sort of thing. But as Bill has mentioned in prior meetings, one of the things we want to do, there is some equipment we'd like to buy and it's in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand. It's a hydro excavator that would allow us to maintain, clean these brand new dry wells that have been put in in the last two years and any subsequent ones. So, and it would also help the water department when they do excavation because you could do excavation around utilities with this type of equipment and, and not have safety issues. And it's, it's a, it'll be a great addition to our fleet of equipment, but it's around a hundred thousand. So if you, I think Bill ran the numbers last time, if we went to a $10 fee, you know, you, you'd have, you know, within a year or two, you'd have plenty of money for this capital expenditure and then you could keep accumulating money to, to continue to do, you know, we've had to do whack a little bit with stormwater over the years, Pete. We, we do some repairs, Tom does what he can, but we really need a line item for, you know, new dry wells where we need them and other drainage work, particularly as, you know, environmentally sensitive, the, the lakefront. We, we've been dumping stormwater into the lake directly, which really isn't kosher. So we've got a few other things we'd like to do in the future with stormwater issues.
We, you know, we contract with somebody outside to help with, with the cleaning out dry wells and things like that. So there is an expense besides the, the individual dry well purchases. And then the street department has been great about, you know, going out and buying, putting things in. But there needs to be, needs to be some other costs, you know, cost reduction of the, by, by adding a fee.
Essentially, the, the paving projects in the past, you know, we've only had limited funds to do actual road improvement work as well. So if this community grant program continues and we're able to make use of it, then we'll continue to do significant paving. But more typically, when you look back, we didn't have a lot of money for paving, partly because some of that paving budget wound up doing stormwater repairs. So hopefully that'll be a, a win-win synergy sort, sort of thing. If we've got money for stormwater repairs, then we can potentially do a little more paving in the event of the community grant program dries up or we're not eligible or, you know, or we don't win an award in subsequent years. So it's a win-win on, on road maintenance in general.
Laurel, on the, the water department, things that they want to do on Lake Shore Drive when the sewers open, has that all been coordinated with Haas and whoever?
Right. Haas has been doing all the preliminary for us. You know, he's given us, you know, rough idea on cost and, you know, is, see it as a big benefit of piggybacking. We, one of the things, we're fortunate, we know that we don't have leakage anywhere. But again, a lot of that piping down there is quite old. So we, as long as Phil says, you know, the patient's open, we might as well check it out and make sure that we get another 80 or 90 or a hundred years out of it.
Well, we can always get Chicago's lead pipes.
Well, right. That's one thing. We don't have lead pipes, but I, my understanding, we do have some lead fittings that we would probably take a look at at that time too. So actually Greg is under the impression that at some point in time, it's going to be mandate that no lead at all anywhere near water. So.
Is there, do you have an estimate of what that is supposed to cost? Because that, that, we would add that to the water bill, yes?
Yes, we would do that, just like we now have our infrastructure fee from the last time we redid piping in the, in the town many years ago. You know, a lot of the things are contingent and what we find when we get there, but we're looking at, oh, very low side, possibly 300,000 on up to 600,000. But we're looking, we're feeling comfortable and Haas is feeling comfortable. It's on the well we're side. So we would spread that out like we did, you know, for 20 years, like we did the first group. So it won't be a huge hit because actually it'll be a lot less than what we're doing now because the dollars are not as big as what they were the last time.
And that, that bond, the old bond is, is up, I think, didn't you say?
In '27.
Yeah.
So, you know, for a while there, there'll be an overlap, but what we're spending this time isn't anywhere near what we spent the last time. So it won't be a huge increase during the seven years, excuse me, till it's paid off.
Bob, do we have any update on the building code violation fines and fees?
No, nothing new there. I guess we need to push Chris on that some, see where we're at.
I, I, for a while, the courts were shut down because of COVID, but they're open now.
Yep. So we need to push and see what's going on there.
Why don't we just ask, require him to give us a status report of each of the items? The building commission would like that as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And he could do that on each of them. I know some, some people have come in and paid, paid fines, but a lot of these that are outstanding are ones that aren't going to be paid until, until the court intervenes.
Well, there's some pretty substantial 30 day fees that are out there. Those are the ones I'm more concerned with.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and regarding that 30 day, you know, we, we agreed to sign that contract with Granicus. I haven't done that yet. Because we're in the process of hiring a new police chief, my thought is, is that the best way to handle that with the 30 day thing is to have the police chief be trained in use of that software because it's an enforcement issue. So when we have a new chief, we can train him into how to, how to do that. So I haven't signed that contract yet because it's a year contract. There's no sense signing if we're not going to train anybody to use it yet. So hopefully soon we'll be able to get that signed and get that out there.
What does the software do?
Software identifies people who are renting for less than 30 days.
Do we, do we get a chance to try that out first?
No, they actually have to train you on how to do it. But it sounds like it's pretty effective. They, they not only locate these people, but they also have documentation for you. So basically, they told me that no one, I guess one person has, has tried to contest it, but they have it so locked tight that they have all the documentation that, you know, that, that they're basically caught red handed. So this should fix our 30 day rental problem.
And, and it's not expensive, is it, Bob?
Well, I think, no, we, we, we agreed to sign it at the, not this last town council meeting, but the one before. And I think it was like $1,500 a year. It'll easily pay for itself.
What it does, Pete, is it, it uses artificial intelligence. Most of those short-term rentals are all negotiated over social media and the internet. So it, it somehow uses algorithms and, and artificial intelligence to scan all those different sources. And it identifies the properties. It goes back into real estate records, gives you locations and amounts. It's just, it's pretty, it's pretty incredible. For that kind of money, it's, it's worth a shot, I'd say. They've already identified for Bob the 40 some properties that are doing it now. So, but they won't release the final information till you cough up the money.
Sure. Yeah. Okay.
This is not a big problem at this time of year, is it? Or, I mean, I just, no.
Well, my guess is it's probably bigger than we think in that I think a lot of people who live in big cities are choosing to come to places like Long Beach during this COVID lockdown.
Okay.
So it's probably bigger this year than it was last year at this time.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, to give you an idea, where I sit on my block, within a block in each direction, I know of three for sure that do short-term rentals. So I mean, it, it's just been difficult to, you know, for adjacent property owners to rat them out, number one, and then our enforcement efforts. So this will give us a lot stronger case to go after these people.
How much do you get a month, John?
Now, Pete, if everybody behaved themselves would be one thing, but you know, you got, and, and it's an issue for the fire department, believe it or not. You cram three or four families into these places. They advertise them with, you know, 15, 18 bunk beds in a house. One of these nights, we're going to get a 3:00 AM fire call with little kids trapped in one of these joints. I mean, it's just, there are lots of reasons not to allow it. The big, big, if you read the national press right now, an awful lot of the foreclosures, there are companies that are running around buying up foreclosed properties and, and areas like ours are prime targets because, you know, they can make so much money on these rentals in, in resort areas like ours. So I think it's something we just have to get a handle on because it's going to continue to increase.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if, if, if somebody can send me the information on this, I'd like to see that.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, let's see. Community center, we were waiting if there were to be any capital improvements there. Wait, Pete, Peter?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Since the building's been closed, and I know that we're not getting maybe half or whatever we're doing, Bill, with the revenue on the building, and we haven't had any meetings, I think we should wait until the building finally opens up and then we'll, we'll have a meeting and we'll, we'll come up with a list. But I don't think it's appropriate right now to try to do improvements when, when, when we're not doing well financially with the, the rentals. Okay. Leaves, you said, Bill, from November 2nd?
Yeah, the leaves is, the, the leaf pickup cost has remained the same for the last four years. We have had the departure of the leaves to a, has gone up $3,000.
The what has?
The, the, the disposal of the leaves.
Okay.
Has gone up $3,000. So it's, it's now 15,000 instead of 12. But, and I, you know, I, the guy who, disposal of leaves also brings barge rocks to owners and everything else to remediate the lake. So I, you know, I think he's, his services are more expensive this year.
So what's the total, what's the total bill?
$63,000.
And that includes the?
The disposal.
The disposal, right. Okay.
And we did add, you know, we did add a little bit to the fee for leaf pickup. So we, we still are in good shape with that. Because we, we also usually do a, a one weaker in, in the fall for just $4,000 to, I mean, in the spring, for the leaves that have remained.
Just, just aside, Tom Dawson, I had some conversation about those dates. He's trying to encourage people to get all their leaves out by that last, rather the first weekend in December. We actually have the flexibility of one more week through that week, but we didn't want to publish that date at the, at the public meeting. We basically told the people that last weekend in December, have them out because December 4th, we're done. But essentially, we go through that week with the ability to mop up. Again, we didn't want to publish that just because people always wait till the last day. They're out there raking them two weeks later, as far as I'm concerned. At any rate, just so you all know, that's the program. One, one other thing I'd like to mention, we, we really do need to get a capital program for our overall needs with equipment. Tom and I've had some conversations, Bill and I have had some conversation. I think we need to do that. You know, these leaf machines, whatever we're getting, you know, per household for the leaf rate operation, keep in mind that those machines eventually will need to be replaced. Those are our machines. So just in general, we do have to think about that. And that's one of the projects I'd like to spend some time on in the coming year. So the plow trucks and their leaf machines and some of these other things, it's, you know, that, that loader situation kind of came up on us without us being aware. We, we should be planning a little more concretely for capital equipment in the future.
Okay. Let's see. The asset inventory bill, is that?
It's still in progress. So.
Who, who's doing that?
It's got to be me. And I, I tried to solicit some, some, some college kids. I may put an ad in the paper because I just need some, some of, most of it is just really, is just data gathering.
Do we have tags that we're putting on stuff?
No. You know, I, I did talk to an expert in that, Pete, and he said, you know, I mean, when I worked at IBM, I remember that every chair had a sticker underneath it. And, you know, we, we have the ability to just say, four laptops and, and five desktop computers and, and group them together. And we don't need to, you know, and the same thing goes with, with chairs in the community center and chairs at the town hall. We don't have to, we don't have to be quite that exotic as, as, as tag everything. But with that, we need to do that. And that's just part of what John Wall was talking about, about our, our capital inventory and also our, our, our plans for the future. Yeah.
We met with the insurance guy last week, Pete, just for your information. He's going to give us a, his records regarding the rolling stock, you know, the fire trucks and the street equipment. And so at least, because those things are actually tabulated for their use in terms of the insurance requirements.
One of the things that he did offer, which would be very helpful, is just to, you know, to. is just to, you know, to, we, uh, in the past, we always just, we, we kind of grouped insurance. But the difficulty for me is to try to spread the costs out. Cause we have all these fees. So when I write a, when I write a check to the insurance company, I, you know, there are, there are, uh, six, uh, funds that I'm taking money from. Community Center Park, uh, MVH, General, uh, you know, CCD, you know, it's just a piece of, of, of everything. And the water department pays, you know, there's a separate check. So we, we have, we have a lot of different pieces. So that would be helpful, but, but right now we, we've not completed it.
As, as far as that asset inventory, I guess I'm wondering, uh, I know the sisters used to put tags on everything too. In fact, every computer had a, had a tag with a number on it. So if we don't tag these things and put numbers on them, if a computer comes up missing, how do we know which computer we don't have anymore?
I will tell you. But you know, we'll, I mean, we, you know, we're not, uh, we're, I think, I think everything that we've got is used. So if a computer, you know, comes missing, it will be
Okay.
A police report. But, but, but you're right. I don't mean that we will not, I mean, I think we will know which, I don't know, we haven't put a tag on it. But obviously if we have five desktop computers and, uh, you know, one at the street department and, and, and three in the water deputy clerk, clerk's office, one and, one and two in the police department or, you know, and, and then there, there are individual computers for each of the officers. So I, I think we've got it, you know, it's, I mean, they, they will be identified as, as that. I'm just saying that they, you know, so I suppose you could put a tag on them, but.
You're saying though, because of the size of our organizations?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, um, how, the employee salary survey and, and the, how's that going?
We've got that. Well, the focus right now is, you know, is, is on the, on the police chief. Uh, we've done some work with the, the salary survey, but right now we're, I think we're kind of zero, zeroing in on trying to, I'm trying to pick a chief and figure out what the pay is going to be. And then we should be able to provide the rest of that information because we did do a fairly extensive uh, listing of, of what we're paying and everything else. And I've done some work with some of the, some of the, there's a couple of positions that we want to talk about, but I think I figured we, we really need to spend time on, on the police chief situation. Cause that one's kind of critical because, because depending on who, who and, uh, we hire is depending on what we do with, with staffing too. So we have training issues, not just for, for, uh, for Granicus, but we've got, you know, we may need another officer.
Wait, 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 wait. We, another officer for what?
Well, if it were, if, if Sergeant Schoolly is elevated to police chief, then we're down the street.
Oh. Well, okay, but it's, it's not additional, it's a replacement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I don't mean, no, yeah, it's a replacement. Yeah. It is, period, Pete.
Don't forget, don't forget the option of, of reducing an officer. I mean, there are places around here that have only three, uh, three officers. Um, I mean, a total of four in the department. You know, we've been running with five, for a long time, we were running with five plus dispatchers, plus stuff. But, but, um, there are many officers who have a full-time, uh, chiefs who have a full-time duty out in the, out in the street. But that's up to you guys. But it's certainly done. Um, okay, uh, let's see. Um, uh, well, now we had, I know we had made a promise to get, get the salary stuff done by, actually it was like June 30th. Is there any rumblings or any kind of problems with that? I guess that's a no.
Haven't heard anything, no. I, I guess they forgot about that promise.
Okay. Strike that comment.
Well, I think the human, the human relations committee should continue to meet. And again, Bill's correct, we've been concentrating on the police chief. We actually paid for a salary study for him, Pete. I didn't know if you were aware of that or not, but so that we do have some definitive information on the adjacent community police chief salaries. But I think we, we, you know, we haven't lost track of the rest of it. We just, again, concentrated on the chief, but I think in the coming quarter or certainly beginning of next year, we'd be able to do more with everybody's salaries. There, there were lots of different issues that came up relative to hard timers that hadn't seen raises and other individuals, uh, in regular staff that needed to be addressed as far as salary increases and those sorts of things.
Yeah, well, you know, it, it's, it's necessary to get them all together. So, you know, instead of peace man, but that's up to you guys. Disaster recovery, we talked about the insurance company willing to sell us a policy on, uh, ransomware. But I raised the issue of, did this, does the, does the, um, insurance company recommend somebody to look at our system to prevent, to ensure that we're not a victim of ransomware? Cause that would be devastating.
Yeah, we, the meeting that we had that, uh, John Wall and I attended with, uh, with Michiana Insurance, they are coming back with a, with a quote for, for ransomware. I know they're very serious about it because I know it costs 250,000. We got, we got hacked, uh, but we were able to recover without any, without any cost.
Who, who got hacked?
So we can't.
Who got hacked?
We did.
You mean the police department or the clerk's department?
What's that?
Police or clerk?
Police.
Well, yeah, well, he, he lucked out on that.
Yep. We had, we had backup and, uh, and we're more rigid with backup every day. Um, uh, so, so that part is, is there, but, but, uh, the cost of the insurance, I think, I think didn't he, he rattled off, John, didn't he say some three or $4,000 is maybe what we're talking about?
Yeah, I don't know if you had a number that day, but Pete, just so you understand, when you buy that insurance coverage, then there is quite a bit of assistance that comes. If you do get into a such problematic situation with ransom or cyber attacks that they actually bring a whole team in, and that's the beauty of it. When you buy the insurance, you, you, you actually buy the expertise. Um, I, I, I think you've got the right idea though. There may be some, um, precursor or some, you know, uh, analysis of our current situation that comes along with it, but we'll have to find that out once he gets the quote to us. It, it, he was very explicit about what happens when you do get attacked, but it'd be nice to know that. And, and just like, uh, you know, in my world, we always had insurance, uh, people come in ahead of any incidents, looking at, you know, your procedures and that sort of thing. Hopefully that comes with the package. I kind of got the idea that it did, that you built. Yes.
Well, I, I, I think we need to know that for sure because, I mean, I, I've been involved in a ransomware situation and it's devastating. And, uh, it's nice to be paid X thousand dollars to get, get it recovered, but in the meantime, you're just lost. And, uh, that's something we don't want to get involved in. So I think that that package, whatever we do there, we should require, if it costs extra money, um, to have someone come in and say, what are our vulnerabilities? Um, and there are probably not many. I mean, most of this stuff happens via the internet and some companies have gone, um, and, and just basically cut off the internet and make the system run internally only. Um, other systems, um, ransomware situations come up with somebody adds a, um, what do you call it? A, a plugin to the compute, to a computer and that does it. So what we need to do is make sure that that doesn't happen. Um, cause I, I assure you, it is, it is disastrous. And you are just crippled. And we have basically two systems. We've got the police system, which fortunately, when it got hacked, it didn't infect the clerk's system. Um, but we need to, we need to make sure that doesn't happen. And it's, it's gotta be pretty simple. All we need is some expert to come in for a, a day and say, what are you doing and what do you got to change? But, you know, once again, that's up to you guys, but I.
Are you going to get that, uh, communication with the insurance company updated?
Yeah, we, we will, we will do this, Pete. I, you know, it, it didn't get done before, but we, we need to, we, and I don't think the council is going to dispute it. It's, it's too serious.
Yeah.
Okay, um, there was some talk about body cameras and stuff. Um, is that a dead issue right now?
It's been done.
Done.
They've already purchased them and they're wearing them. Um, in fact, we even addressed that with the, uh, police chief candidates as far as, you know, there's been a lot of talk, uh, different parts of the country where police are involved in incidents and haven't turned down their body camera. And so both, uh, chief candidates were asked, you know, how would you handle that? Um, I have to admit, I, I wasn't thrilled with either answer in that they talked about, you know, warnings and all this kind of stuff. And it does seem to me like policemen ought to be wearing, ought to have those cameras on all the time. Uh, I guess we have to be sympathetic to the fact that sometimes they can be involved in life and death situations and maybe have to make decisions and maybe under that kind of pressure, things get forgotten, but I'd sure like to be sure that we're not in that situation where we bought the cameras and they aren't turned on.
And, uh, uh, and Bob, in that re, in that regard, we need, we need a written policy as to how this is handled because if, if you're involved in a situation and, and somebody comes back and starts claiming, why isn't your, why don't we have body camera stuff? You got them, right? And you get into the issue of, oh, something must have happened and you guys screwed us. Um, so we need, we need a written policy and that policy needs to be enforced. And the one area when I was talking with the chief before, now you guys have had updated, is, is the situation of when somebody comes in and requests body camera footage. There are, one of the initial problems in this area was you needed to have something that would block out the faces of certain individuals for privacy situation. Make sure all of that is covered as well. Because that's another, it's kind of like HIPAA for criminals. Um, so, it, it, one, it, the, the issue that comes up with this stuff is once you install a piece of something, you then have to declare and ensure that it's being handled properly and consistently. And if it's not, you're immediately, it's almost, in my opinion, it's, it might be better not to have the body cameras. Because all of a sudden, the, the background stuff that comes up and all it takes is one, one kid being stopped improperly and, uh, we're in trouble. Uh, so that's just a word of caution. But there's a lot of things that come with these body cameras that are glossed over. Stop 24, you say we're, we're into that for about 240,000 and we figured that out. We got 60 coming from the park and we got 100 from the grant. So we're net about $80,000 there, right?
Right.
Multiple. Okay, um, tower ordinance. Um, have we looked into the fiber optics? We're using town property. I mean, how does that stuff work? We got ADS who's, who's, who has put stuff in under our property and I don't know where it's at. Who's got it?
I see automated data on, but maybe we need to, I need to talk to them, yeah.
Well.
Right now, but yeah.
But, but I mean, this, this 5G stuff is coming. And, uh, especially with Apple now. Now we may be last on the list, but we're just little punk crowd, but pretty soon somebody's going to put up a tower and then those towers are going to require, um, individual capture points in the town. And there's a whole situation of how much stuff can you put on a telephone pole? Do you need more telephone poles? What can go on individual property? So uh, the first step is to find out where, what, what exists right now. Yeah, that, that's, that's my opinion, but I, it's just an area that's, that's going to be, uh, a situation that's going to crop up. And it, and it's happening in many towns right now. And, and as you know, the, uh, the state, the state has proven, as well as the federal government, have, um, instituted several rules or ordinances, or whatever you want to call them, laws that say, uh, local municipalities cannot interfere in any way with the installation of 5G, 5G properties, uh, 5G installations. All you can do is have some sort of cosmetics or that kind of stuff. So we've got to, got to figure that out. Cause I, I don't want my neighbor having a tower hanging over my house. But that's up to you guys. Uh, anybody got anything else?
Yeah.
By the way, the one thing, Pete, that I was talking about tower, you know, we, we did this analysis and I think you did a lot of work on it, but we, we currently get $10,000, um, a year, $847 a month, uh, from the person who owns, where the lease with us. And they have, uh, not, not so, I don't hear so much from them this year, but over the years, they have come to us and asked us to, would we, would we want to sell them the whole, the whole tower? Um, the way the lease is written is we didn't really get it, you know, it was written so long ago, we didn't get a great deal. So if they add, um, uh, companies on the tower, that doesn't accrue to us. But, uh, the question is, you know, they, they offered, I think, you know, $140,000 one year. And we obviously realized that if it was worth 140,000 to them, they were not doing it because they wanted to lose money. So, you know, do we want to continue to collect $10,000 a year? And it goes up, it'll go up, um, another 3%, I think, next year. But it's, it's never going to be a big moneymaker. So that, that is a, a question that maybe for another day, but, uh, but something that, that, uh,
You and I looked at that lease and it makes your eyes bleed, but what, should somebody look at that thing? Is there, I mean, to think that somebody signed that lease, which was, which happened a long time ago, uh, that's a huge property. And there's a lot of rights accruing to that lease. Is there a way that we can get out of that thing and?
I mean, you can get out of it by selling it to somebody because they, everybody wants, you know, there was a time when I was getting.
Yeah, but I, I would like, I would like the town to make more money out of it.
Me too.
Does the lease have a termination date at all?
No. It, it just goes on and every three years it, 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 it goes up or every five years, I can't remember which it was, but it goes up a skill amount. But, uh, you know, it's not, it's, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not something, I mean, you know, it's the $10,000 that, that we can spend, but it's not, uh, uh, it, it's not, and I know Michiana sure has sold theirs. But they had more, they actually had more, uh, vendors on it than we did, than we do. So, uh,
Is everybody who signed that lease dead now?
I think so, yeah. But I, you know, maybe what I could do is send out a, just a, a regular email and ask if there's anybody in town that, that's got experience with, with cell phones and would they want to come in and, and, because that's really what I'd like to do is have somebody look at it. Cause Pete is right, it goes on and on and on. But there might be somebody who would do a, you know, a customer service for us and look at, look at something like that.
I can tell you, it was too mu, it was too much for me to understand.
Yeah, I, it, it, you know, it, it does, uh, yeah, it, it, but, but there might, you know, there might be somebody who would be able to carve this thing up. And maybe there's a way that we could, we could get more, uh, we could get more revenue out of that thing. So, I mean, and that, we don't have to sell it, but we might be able to get more revenue. I'll do that. I'll, I'll send something out just to ask somebody if there's anybody in town who, who's got experience with that. And, you know, we got, got 1,100 homes, so we've got a lot of people that might be able to help us with that. And that, you know.
Anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, a couple of things, Pete. Um, you know, in addition to the, everything we've talked about with stormwater, I'm meeting with Haas tomorrow morning, um, about the issues that between stop 16 and 19. Uh, Mr. Riz, he's on the call, I see. So I've, I've promised that I would report back to him after that meeting, but we should, we've already done the soil borings down there, which you've heard me talk about at prior meetings. And that'll allow us to do the, the final engineering. Hopefully Haas is already well down that road. And that'll allow us to do the, the final engineering, hopefully Haas is already well down that road, but I'll meet with him tomorrow. We'll know more about that. Uh, hopefully, the, the hope, you know, the hope is that we can do just some dry wells and eliminate the outfall down through Mr. Rizzi's property, but we won't know that till after we meet with Haas. So that project may entail some drainage work. Likely will entail some drainage work, including maybe, you know, half a dozen dry wells or something. So, you know, you could be looking at, I don't think it's fifty thousand, but you could be looking at some multiple tens of thousands to get that accomplished. But we'll let you know here as soon as I know more definitively what that might amount to. Another thing would be some fire contract information. Um, you know, Pete, you've been after me for quite a while and I apologize for not getting it done during those first year or two. But we did talk about that at our fire officer meeting last night. So we reviewed the contract between the town and, and the, uh, fire department. We're gonna have a committee that's gonna do that in a little more detail. Just to give you a heads up, that thing was negotiated in two thousand and eleven. Uh, we've been getting that twenty-eight thousand annually since then. Um, we're, we've kind of depleted that fund this year, there's been some pretty significant equipment purchases and other things that the department is, um, has had. I think we need to renegotiate it for lots of reasons, you know, Dylan's no longer in the program, but also in terms of the, the financial commitment between the town and the fire department, we were at twenty-eight thousand for those nine years. Uh, we anticipate needing to be in somewhere in the middle thirties, maybe mid to upper thirties, looking forward for twenty twenty-one. Uh, just to give you a heads up, I think we probably should put some sort of an acceleration clause in there with some kind of nominal increase in the future, so we don't wind up, you know, ten years down the road with, uh, the same dollars that we start with in twenty twenty-one. So that's just a heads up, um, about what we're anticipating and we'll hopefully, hopefully have that contract negotiation to you. I've actually got the budgetary backup for what we did with the money this year, I can get that to you. Uh, we actually have, uh, tightened up our systems a little bit in terms of what we report, so we're able to give you some definitive information about where the twenty-eight thousand, we've always been able to report that and have also, it's public record as, as, as you know. But I just wanted to give you a heads up. One other thing, Bill, for your information, I misspoke the other night, that, that gear washing machine, which is been a real good thing that we've added, uh, it's about a seventy-five hundred dollar machine. Um, I thought there was a grant on that, that, that particular piece of machinery did not get a grant, so, we can talk about it, right now, the invoice is in our hands for that, it just came in, we just got it mounted. As you know, um, in the fire service, washing gear has gotten to be quite a safety issue when you have the kind of toxins, particularly with the new furnishings and things that are in homes, when people have that, those pollutants on their gear and then they keep them in their homes or wear them again, it's, it's a, quite a cancer risk for the fire department, uh, personnel. So this washing machine's a great addition, we'll be able to wash our equipment now. I, I haven't talked to you yet, Bill, but we can talk about whether you can pop for that seventy-five or not with what you're doing with your budget. But at any rate, those are the two things I wanted to mention about the fire department.
Okay, let me, let me, on the second thing where you talked about the, uh, the, the contract itself, the twenty-eight thousand, and you indicated that there have been equipment purchases. Just to make sure, the, the proper way that we should be doing this is that you got, the fire department should be putting together something to submit to the budget that identifies capital or other equipment that's necessary, because the contract as written basically says the, the fire department, uh, long-term fire department is responsible for training and clothing a, um, a, a force. It does not say they are supposed to be paying for capital equipment like scuba gear and all that kind of stuff. Or is that the right term, scuba?
Yeah, SCBA, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so, so if there are hard asset purchases, those should be submitted and budgeted so that you guys don't have to take it out of the twenty-eight thousand. So, and, and that's, that's just the way the contract is written, that's the way I've always interpreted it. The, the town is responsible for the, for the, uh, the hard assets. That, that's all equipment, all equipment purchases and fire trucks and all that junk. And, and that's one of the reasons why we voted to put, you know, pay for that scuba gear several years ago, two, three years ago, which was, I think, fifty thousand bucks or something like that. That was high, whatever, but that's, that's the way this needs to be done, so, whatever we have to do to make up the current, you should itemize the items that you have purchased for the past year, but in the future, we need to have that budgeted and say, okay, we need to buy a, a gear washer. And, and that needs to go in the town budget. Does that make sense?
Well, what we plan to do in the first quarter of the year, Pete, is actually have that to you. So you, it, much like I'd like to have for the street department, the rest of the departments, we're, we'll, we'll present that to you in the first quarter, we've, we've already done some planning. We've been remiss the last couple of years not having that to you, but we will do that. We'll, we'll try to anticipate what we need and, and be ahead of the curve rather than behind the curve like we were this year.
Yeah, and that, that's, that stuff comes in somewhere, it, it's best to have that submitted bill right around June, I would say June first, then that becomes part of the budget, the annual budget process.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I'm done, if everybody else is done.
I'm done.
Ciao.
Ciao.
Everybody.